Ladies and gentlemen, please give standing for the first elected councillor, Ken Stevenson.
Good evening colleagues, welcome to the meeting of the council, please be seated. I would quite like to inform you that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public or press would like more information about this, or if they intend to record proceedings themselves, please contact Strategy and Democracy Services and we'll be more than happy to advise. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items should use the microphones available. The first item of business is declarations of interest. No declarations have been received. Does anyone now wish to further make any declarations before we move on to the next business? The next item of business is the minutes of the meeting of the council of the 26th of July 2018. Are they accepted as a true record?
Aye.
The next business is major communications. It is my great pleasure to announce that the council has been externally recognised as a local authority at the leading edge when it comes to dementia friendliness. The council is leading the way in developing a new approach to helping people with dementia. The majority of elected members have now been trained and certified as dementia friends with the expectation that 100% of councillors will soon be putting into practice their new skills and knowledge. This is only part of our overall dementia strategy. Other public facing groups at the council are also undergoing training. Not only frontline and adult social care staff, but housing teams, licensing teams, commissioning teams, as well as parking attendants. Recently, a representative of the LGIU, the Local Democracy Think Tank, came to the town hall to take part in the dementia friends training session for councillors. A review case study of the work on South Tyneside was circulated to all LGIU local authorities, showing us in a very positive light and leading the way for others to learn from our approach. By becoming dementia friends, we are now a step nearer to achieving dementia friendly status and creating a dementia friendly borough, ensuring that we support people living with dementia in South Tyneside to live better lives. The next business is to consider a report of the Corporate Director of Children, Adults and Health on the family's first service. I will ask councillor Magra Smith to formally move the report. Councillor Smith?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The remit of the family's first service is to deliver a wide range of family interventions to short rate care services with the aim of preventing young people needing to enter the care system. The service provides support to children and families in their own homes, in the local community and within the family's first service based at Thames Road. We have developed our family's first service as our active care provision in response to rising demands of children being looked after due to family breakdown and difficulties with managing challenging behaviours. The service offers support to children, young people and families who live in the local community. The team are available to support families through crisis from 8am to 10pm from Monday to Friday. In addition to this vital support, the home operates a short rates division that is open from Friday evening until Sunday evening. The family's first service has worked with 81 children, young people and their families from a start date in October 2017. The largest proportion is within the 13 to 15 year age range. Family's first service has a 98% success rate in supporting young people on the edge of care to stay with their families. Family's first service is now in the concept of children and family social care. As the team has developed, it is becoming clear there are opportunities to support white groups which are not currently within the remit of the service. Consideration will be given as to the ongoing development of the service in light of this. A review of the service has commenced and the intention is to extend its support to children looked after where there are risks of places breaking down and to consider support to families where children are rehabilitated over proper care. I would ask members to acknowledge the work of the family's first service and the planned approach to delivering and developing the service. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Smith. Is that settled?
Aye.
Are there any questions on or does any member wish to speak with the report? Councillor Irwin?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Colleagues, I would like to express my appreciation to officers and frontline staff who spearheaded this innovative service. In South Tyneside, we have a vision for our children and young people to get an ever best start in life by supporting and encouraging stronger and stable families through our early help and targeted corporate interventions. By providing this service for our vulnerable children and young people, we can support them to remain safely in the care of their families. Family's First is an exciting and positive development for our borough. The Ofsted inspection in March cited many positive actions taken and to quote one of the comments made, 'Through careful and thoughtful recruitment, a team is being put together of staff who have a wide range of skills and experience. They have united as a strong team that provides high levels of meaningful support that has had a positive impact on the children and young people.' So colleagues, I'm sure I agree, you will applaud the hard work undertaken and the excellent outcomes and positive difference that this has made to the lives of these children and young people. And I, as I'm sure you do, will look forward to receiving further updates on progress of this service in the next 12 months. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Irwin. Does any other member wish to speak? Is the motion agreed?
Aye.
The next business is to consider a report of the Corporate Director, Children, Adults and Health, providing an update on the Social Care Digital Innovation Programme. I will ask councillor Tracy Dixon to formally move the report. Councillor Dixon?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The Social Care Digital Innovation Programme is a new initiative from the Local Group Association and NHS Digital to find new ways of using digital technologies and solutions to improve care and support. We are 12 councils nationally who successfully made the small grant of £20,000 for the first discovery phase of the Social Care Digital Innovation Programme. The purpose of this discovery phase is both to learn about any particular problems that users are finding if needed and then identify potential additional solutions inappropriate. A key principle of the discovery work is to remain open to all learning methods identified during the work and we pay not to see the project or expected solutions yet the results suggested that this is not the right way forward. Our project is called 'The Life: My Choice, My See, My Lead' and it is focused on learning more about the challenges and problems service users with learning disabilities and autism experience when communicating with their social workers. As they tell us that they don't feel listened to or understood. Often, it is the voice of the parent, carer or another professional that is strongest in case more and the affirmations of the service users are not understood or acknowledged. A creative element of the project is to work with partners. We have commissioned your voice camps, the local advocacy charity, to run the facility sessions with their experts by experience and service users with learning disabilities and/or autism to help learn more about communication problems and to identify potential solutions. Once we have received that for the user session, we will work with internal ICT and digital colleagues as a regional digital innovation agency, Digital Caput, to look at how digital technologies can provide solutions to help service users with learning disabilities and/or autism to have a stronger voice in their care lives. There will be an option at a later stage to build further funding to assist with the development and implementation of a digital solution to help solve some of the communication challenges for this group of service users if earlier work is shown that this would be helpful or feasible. I would ask members to acknowledge the award of the Social Care Digital Innovation Programme grant and the planned approach to delivering the work required over the coming weeks. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Is that settled?
Aye.
Are there any questions on or does any member wish to speak with the report? Is the motion agreed?
Aye.
The next business is to consider a report of the African Corporate Director, Economic Regeneration on Highway Asset Management. I will ask councillor Nathan Maxwell to formally move the report. Councillor Maxwell?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This council report outlines two things to date, the likes of summary of council guidance and the steps we are taking to comply with this guidance to ensure that our hard highways and infrastructure are effectively managed from afar. The council's highway asset management plan, formally approved by council in November 2017, applies our approach to the management of highways and ensures that this is undertaken in the most efficient way possible. Things about the assets, establishing their conditions, deciding what could require funding and then realistically managing the whole finance with a budget that will never be sufficient after we look to address the £69 million highway maintenance backlog cost. Highway asset management is strategic to work with and uses information to look for all network, network and highway rather than just individual ones. Our chief concern can be summarized as, we are a DCT plan through authority, the highest bound achievable. This maximises our available external funding on road maintenance, which in turn ensures that the backlog of highways we face is kept to a minimum. We have an asset management plan that allows us to develop and optimise plans to deliver maintenance in the most cost effective way and it also enables us to make informed decisions relative to budget management. We have an asset management plan that also ensures that we apply the most appropriate solution and breathing. In addition, we have introduced further preventative maintenance techniques such as micro-asspire and slow seeding. In terms of taking steps to comply with compliance and going forward, we have introduced the principles of the well managed highway infrastructure and cabinet approved this new policy only yesterday. This report applies the challenging and complex nature of managing our highway assets and ensures members that the council has robust plans in place for the effective management and maintenance of our highways. But for the robust policies and procedures, the highway network would be in a considerably worse state. We wouldn't continue with worst course and not having interventions to deal with deterioration. South Tyneside can perform well on all fronts by G and the B3, the highest bound of G1 and we are proud of that. This demonstrates best practice and ensures we receive the most available grants. South Tyneside will continue to work diligently as asset management designers and the new important practice evolved to maintain that high B3 status while demonstrating continuous improvements in the application of highway asset management. Members are asked to note the content of this report which provides assurance that the council is maximising their available resources to improve the highway asset and the benefit of all stakeholders. Mr Mayor, I want to report.
Is that settled?
Aye.
Are there any questions on or does any member wish to speak with the report? Councillor Irwin?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As we all know, potholes continue to be managed by local people who line up roads every day to cover up their business. I've seen a number of reports in the shield of debt this year, including those recently on August 16th, where residents on the Parkview estate claimed that no reserving in Newmarket in 13 years and potholes have been filled in with tar, which is a short term solution. As it lasted two days according to the resident in the report. I understand that this is a priority for the government also as they yield around £183,000 following the bad weather in March and is encouraging the year that this particular award is dear for servicing next year. However, can any member confirm to me what is being done to ensure that long term solutions are found to fix potholes, not short term ones? And is it the immediate coverage to ensure the disease is addressed and we should have more thoughtful approach?
Councillor Maxwell?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. At present time, potholes, as we all acknowledge, have been red in all this period during the winter. But what we have to understand is that each road has to be assessed and they are in categories of importance and proof. And that determines at which stage is it within league, is it within 24 hours, or is it longer that that pothole is safe on the road? And at the moment, that's what we can do and are doing and I think quite well. When the north of the pothole has been caused to damage, sometimes when they're re-laying, it goes with, but they come back and they replace it. That is due to what the ground work goes down, possibly and also the manual laying of the tar, it's just a case of circumstances and the environment.
Councillor Martin?
Oh yes, thank you, Chairman. I'm always surprised at the councillors' comments about what we're doing as a council. When his government, the government of his party, the Conservative government, has cast that austerity on local government, on the country over the last 10 years and has deprived this council of well over £145 million!
Councillor Irwin?
Well over £145 million! It's not instant history, it's happening now because we have to make at least £15 million for the next financial year. His government is responsible for it. His government has introduced austerity, has cut public expenditure, has ruined the public sector. That's why we can't keep the roads in the manner which we would expect to.
Councillor Irwin? Councillor Irwin, is there any motion? You've got time, Councillor, but you please wait. Right?
Right.
Is the motion agreed?
Aye.
The next business is to consider a report of the Operations Director on Local Democracy Week 2018. I will ask councillor Kirk formally move the report. Councillor Kirk?
Local Democracy Week. This report's been brought to council... Thank you. We don't want to hear it and it's got again. And this report has been brought to council to provide information about Local Democracy Week 2017 and a proposed activity for 2018 and 2019. Actually, it quite was being known for 2018. Each one of us plays a year round role to promote opportunities for residents to inform decision making and policy development, including the Borough Council which receives motions, reports, petitions and residence as we've seen at this meeting today. Various committees held in public, we have the community area forums held in venues across South Tyneside and public and statutory consultations of their own. This year, Local Democracy Week will be held between the 15th and the 21st of October. It is an ideal opportunity to raise awareness of how people can participate in public life and influence decisions in their area. National Democracy Week was introduced for the first time in 2018 alongside with the 100th anniversary of the Rapporté de Représentation of the People Act. This report, Borough Council reflects on 2017 events and uses evaluation from those events to propose in charge to Local Democracy Week 2018 and National Democracy Week 2019. Now, I would like to draw members' attention to some particular highlights which include: First one is Studyland. Pupils from 10 primary schools worked together in this chamber to consider how to respond to challenge to elect the leader of a fictional land. The feedback was very positive and the photographs show how much the children are enjoying the activity. It's proposed to hold a similar activity this year. You have been shadowed a councillor. Two young people took the opportunity to shadow a councillor for a day. Not just one, quite odd. And learning about different roles of ward councillor, cabinet member and the solid roles of mayor, deputy mayor. One of the young people text after the day to tell us it was amazing. It is proposed to widen this opportunity to more young people. They will have town hall tours. Pupils from local schools took part in town hall tours at Jarrow and South Shields, including with question and answer sessions. Feedback from one head teacher told us the children had a wonderful time. He also had tours for the general public and it is proposed to offer and promote more of these hugely popular tours this year. Young Parliament's Parliament. Young people's. All 12 secondary schools were invited to send two to three members of their school council to attend a democracy event and to elect a new chair and vice chair for the young people's parliament. Kate Palmer, MYP, explained her role, inspired us to consider applying for roles. Promoting existing forums as well as the activities I've just described. We used the week to propose year round engagement opportunities. The evaluation was excellent. This very positive evaluation of these events has informed our Local Democracy Week 2018, which is outlined in paragraph 36. The report also poses a paragraph 37 to move activity for Local Democracy Week, which is historically held in October, to the new National Democracy Week June-July. This is expected to attract further attendance from schools who may have some more flexibility in the curriculum at that time of year. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Kirk. Is that settled?
Aye.
Are there any questions on or does any member wish to speak with the report? Councillor Puddin and Councillor Ashen, move on.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Colleagues, at this time, when our council is suffering massive government outstopping budget, the councillors and officers often struggle to even meet our statutory obligations. It would be such an easy option to cook things like Democracy Week. And I am so pleased that this is not the case. Since when the government we first started, we have always embraced the opportunity to work with our school councils, youth parliament and our residents to explain to them how local government works and to welcome them into our town halls. And today, it was my pleasure to assist the mayor in giving 60 visitors a tour of the town hall for Heritage Albany. Next week, we are inviting visitors to Jarrow Town Hall. And as a Jarrow councillor, I am always proud to show our visitors the Jarrow March and the media. Those men put their democratic rights to object and to march peacefully into post deduction which will model the loss of honour in democracy. Colleagues, I think Councillor Curtis' report is quite right in highlighting the work we do with our young people, not just during the Local Democracy Week but throughout the year. A visit to the town hall to meet the mayor, being part of the citizenship class at the college or membership of a school council or youth parliament can help sow a seed or inspire a person into politics and local government. In fact, I am now going to endorse our youngest councillor, Councillor Adam Nelson. Adam was part of the youth parliament and became young MP and I would like to bet that that experience gave Adam inspiration to serve this community in heaven. He is living proof that what this council does in encouraging our young people to take an interest in democracy and local government pays dividends and I think we should be very proud. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Puddin. Councillor Irwin?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The Local Democracy... It's great to see South Tyneside continuing to engage in life right and defence to celebrate the importance of democracy. I think it's a great initiative. Could the lead member have raised in how we could all get engaged in getting young people to shadow our local councillors during this week? I would certainly be happy to participate. And I know from my own point of view, my children have been to these parties and all benefit very, very greatly. It's called very, very highly regarded. And I think it's absolutely fantastic. Thank you.
Do you want to brief one of our councillors?
I'll just say thank you all for joining in with me because it wasn't just one councillor that came up with this. It was most of the councillors of this. And I'm, you know, very, very delighted that they did so much and will continue to do so much all the time. This is not just something for a week. It goes for all, 52 or 53 if you like. And we are going to keep all this up. The young people, yes, we've had, you know, very, very good ways of them coming back and we've been listening and it's interesting watching the young people do, you know, the same as the higher people do for the councillors and also how they work so well together. So thank you for that, Mr Mayor.
Is the motion agreed?
Aye.
The next business is to consider a report of the Head of Pensions on the Treasury Management Annual Report 2017/18. I would ask councillor Ed Martin to formally move the report. Councillor Martin?
Well, thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, as this council will note, members will note, treasury management is a process on which the council's cash flow investments and borrowings are managed, the activities are managed. It is the council's practice to comply with the requirements of the Charter of Institute of Public Finance and the Council's Code of Practice on Treasury Management. The code requires that council has to receive an annual report on treasury management activity. This report covers the treasury management activities for 2017/18. In November 2017, the Monetary Policy Committee increased the bank rate to 0.5% from 0.25%. Deflation reached the peak of 3.1% in November 2017, although this was expected and now has returned to around 2.4%. A large proportion of the council's coupled expenditure has been financed by borrowing. The borrowing at the year end was £582.8 million against a borrowing requirement of £644.5 million. The under financing of £51.7 million was financed temporarily from the council's cash balances. During 2017/18... During 2017-18, £31 million of new long-term borrowing were arranged and £21 million of long-term debt was repaid. In addition, a number of short-term borrowings were arranged to assist in cash flow management. The interest charge on debt was broadly aligned with the budget for 2017-18. The savings made on the general fund were offset by the overspend on the H4A. The investment return for the year on the council's cash balances was 0.76%, which was well above the return of 0.29% assumed in the budget. The rate of return was higher than expected due to the bank rate increasing and being able to access special interest-bearing accounts. The organisations that the council lends to, the pre-reach for which it can lend, and the maximum amounts reinvested with each organisation are set in consultation and agreement with linked asset services. During 2017-18, there were eight new counterparties added to the lending list, and one counterpartie had their lending pre-reach increased. All of the treasury management activity has been delivered with an illimit set out in the treasury management strategy. I ask council to note, recommend that the report is noted, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Are there any questions on, or does any member wish to speak with the report? Consul Alexander?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's meant to say the UK economy under this Conservative government continues to grow. It's only expected to be 1.4% in 2019-20, when we jump to 18%. However, what continues to grow is our South Tyneside region wanting to reap the full benefits of the North East Devolution Deal. Due to this council's unwillingness to participate in a devolution deal worth £600 million, unexpected to deliver £10,000 jobs to the region. Now, I'm sure I do not doubt that some of these jobs will take away residents of South Tyneside. Will the council reconsider its position on the devolution deal? As not doing so, will we interest us to the hardworking people at this time?
Well, Mr Mayor, I don't really know what that's got to do with treasury management and how we actually are very prudent in how we manage the finances of the council. But of course, he's had to have, again, you know, when he was under councillor last time, I often said to the councillor, it was time he woke up and smelt the coffee, because he has this, this, more rightly, and this, to me, this, this, this this etymology with the, with the, the way that the Conservative Party has actually ruined, ruined the economy and ruined...
Ruined!
And ruined, and ruined!
Stop, stop! Consul Alexander, sit down. Consul Alexander? Allow, you read your speech, it's Consul Martin who is responding. Please sit down, let him speak. Thank you.
And actually ruined the public sector and the public infrastructure of this, of this country. Regarding the devolution, the South South of the region devolution deal, it wasn't right for South Tyneside. Wasn't right at all. The money wasn't there. Every time leaders were going in to meet government ministers, there was a bit more being chopped off. The amount that's beaten, the amount that was being offered is only a drop in the ocean to what councils across the whole of the Tyneside area have lost over the last 10 years because of his government. Because of his government starving local government of cash, body-eared cash in order to provide services that the people, the constituencies that we represent deserve. There is no way, there is no way that we can go back to that, to that, to that scenario, because of course now the laws of the time have broke off and went on their own very way. Those that remain South of the time would obviously work together to ensure that we get the best for the South of the time. And it is his government that forced devolution on councils. It wasn't devolution, it was forced devolution. It was a directly, a directly elected mayor, one person directing all of the strategy for a region from Berwick, from Berwick, right the way down to Yorkshire Moors. Absolutely ridiculous. No accountability or real accountability whatsoever. If we want devolution, we want a proper elected parliament for the North East with proper democratic accountability to the people that we represent.
Well, if yours say, Consul, if you have us here, now it's time to move on. Is the motion agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to receive questions from Procedure Rule 8. No questions have been received under this rule. The next business is to deal with two petitions received. However, the petition relating to Heaven Helps has since been withdrawn. I will explain the procedure to follow for the remaining petition. The member will present the petition stating the subject of the petition and the number of signatures. We will not debate the petition today. After the petition has been presented, in accordance with the Constitution, I will move that it be referred to the appropriate body. The councillor who has voted against the petition isn't here, so petition is petition from residents of Marina Drive in Nelson Avenue. The petition requests a residence for us given Marina and Nelson Avenue has received 28 signatures. In accordance with standing procedures, I propose that the petition stand referred to the appropriate officer for further consideration. Is that seconded?
Seconded.
Is that agreed?
Agreed.
The next business is to receive motions under Procedure Rule 10. No motions have been agreed under this rule. That concludes the business for today's meeting. Thank you for your attendance.